Okay, it is four o'clock. Yes, okay. Do you want me to wait, Molly?
Sure.
It is four o'clock on the button. I'd like to kick off November's Newfield School Board meeting. Thank you. And I'm also going to be opening up non, excuse me, public input for at least 30 minutes. First, I want to acknowledge, I know this is a different day and time, and I apologize for that. We, I'm going to be out of town this week, and the board, a couple of months ago, made this adjustment. We were originally going to be tacking this on to another meeting we were going to be having earlier. And low and behold, here we are at 4:00 PM on Tuesday. So, thank you for everybody who's able to make it. I am going to do some parenting and signaling at one point, because my daughter has a soccer game. But thank you for being so flexible. We do have a number of folks here for potentially for public input. I know that some folks are here in the spirit of being here for the Budget Advisory Committee, as well as the Safety Committee discussion. So if there are any additional comments that folks wanted to make at this point, not related to those things, I'd invite you to use a couple of minutes for that. Otherwise, we have a pretty packed agenda. And we have some guests here doing their presentation, so I don't want to make things go too out of order. But I also do want to acknowledge that there's a space for that. So Hovey, I know you contacted me yesterday about additional time. I wasn't able to get you officially on the, like, an agenda item. But if you wanted to say something now, or save the input that you wanted to make for either of the... Okay. So it was probably most convenient, because I think, I know your input is going to be related to several items on here, so maybe we'll get to that point, it would be helpful. Perfect. All right. Thank you. So we have some new business. And I think the first thing we're going to do, if it's okay with Ms. B., is we have a staff presentation for Professional Learning Communities. So Susie, I don't know, did you want to introduce?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Christina Brulard, she is our special education teacher, one of them. And she and I are going to take you back, taking you through the professional development that four of us went to in October. So I'm excited to be here in front of all of you, talking about our experience in Texas, and just all about what we learned about and everything. And I do want to take a moment just to thank the SAU for letting me have this opportunity, because there's a lot to be said about, you know, we have professional development here in the SAU, at our school, at the district level. But going somewhere where you meet other people around the world, everyone's very like-minded, you get to vote, not just administration goes. I went, the reading specialist went with us, and Ellen went. Ellen went, yep. And you just learn a lot, and just to be in that environment with everyone there, you have these aha moments, it's like you get really energized and motivated. And it was just a really good experience. So, thank you. I hope more of us get to have that opportunity, because it's very helpful. So yeah, so you're just some of the presenters that was at the, that were at the conference. Anthony Muhammad is one of the leading experts in the field of education, and we heard from him a couple of times. He's written several books, as you can see, a lot about the culture of schools, and how, how a culture of a school is very important in their success, and PLCs. Mike Mattos, he has also written several books. He was a very engaging speaker. He really talked about how to transform schools, and that response to intervention, that NTSS system of support within schools. So he was really great. We went to a couple of his, we were like, he's presenting, never known him. Regina Owens, she was also great. We went to a workshop about singletons and small schools, so it felt right to kind of go to her workshop. And it's just how do you connect, how do you collaborate with the resources you have in small schools? And she had really some really good ideas. Michelle Marilla, she has a very diverse background, but she was really all about coaching, and how to go from, how to become a really effective coach. So just moving from being like a helper, to really being like a high-impact coach. How you get the teacher that you're coaching to be more reflective, and not just ask them questions, or give them the answers, it's really having teachers reflect on their teaching and their practice. So she was great. Okay, so really what the conference was really all about was PLCs, so Professional Learning Communities. So what is a PLC? It's really a group of educators who work together to improve their practice, to improve student outcomes and student learning. So these groups, and they can be very different types of groups, but they meet regularly, either monthly, weekly, bi-weekly, just to share their expertise, to analyze student data, to come up with ideas on how to help students, and help them learn or problem solve together. So. So in Newfields, at Newfields, we have math coaching with Jody Bennett, and that happens weekly by grade level. And there's, and while, it's funny, because it's like, oh, we have all these meetings, like, what's the classroom going to do when the classroom teachers pull from the classroom? But that's when, like, Tracy Illward goes in and does her social-emotional curriculum with the students. So that's the time when kids might, the teacher might get pulled up to do, to be able to have these meetings. So there's that coaching with Jody Bennett, ELA coaching with Melissa Tovia, our reading specialist, to really talk about the WENWIS program that we adopted last year. So that's been really beneficial. Our NTSS team here at Newfields, that multi-tiered system of support, we meet weekly based on grade. And that involves a lot of team players. Susie, Tracy, Illward, the special education teacher, the classroom teacher, our VCPA, our psychologist. We even have paraprofessionals go to that meeting, because they play such a key role in student learning, student outcomes. So everybody goes to those meetings. And it's, it's, we get a lot done in an hour. But it's just really helpful. The special education team, we meet weekly. And sometimes Ellen comes to those meetings as well. And then Special Education and Unified Arts. A lot of the time Unified Art teachers, you know, they might feel out of the loop, or this is a chance for them to be connected in knowing, okay, what's, what might be going on with the students in the classroom? How can I be more effective, how can I, how can I help more? So that happens bi-weekly based on grade. And then, so why? Why do we have these PLCs? I kind of touched upon it a little bit, but when we meet, we have a key and precise agenda. There's a purpose for the meeting. We have things that we need to talk about. There is an agenda for everything that we are meeting about. It benefits the student, the teacher, the whole school community. Everyone benefits from these PLCs. Collaborate. We get to really work together, problem solve together. We have a shared responsibility, so it's not just whoever's leading the PLC, they're not the ones just responsible for, for things. The teacher's responsible, the paraprofessionals have a responsibility. Everyone has that understanding that we're in this together. And then there's, it's job-related professional development. So in our PLCs, we always think about these four essential questions. What do we expect students to learn? Okay, so are we all on the same page about what are the standards we want them to learn? What are the skills that we want them to learn from this unit, like, in math, say? So we need to have an understanding of what do we expect them to learn? How do we respond when they don't learn it? So do we have time set aside for those students that might need extra practice? That, you know, or is it the whole class? Is it just some students? So do we problem solve? How do we give them those opportunities to practice more and to really understand what they're learning? How do we know that they're learning it? So do we have a common understanding of assessments? What are the assessments that we're creating together? Are we have to agree on what we're giving them to be, or is it a project? Or it doesn't have to just be an end-of-unit assessment. It can be other things too. But do we have a common understanding of that? And then how do we respond when they've already learned it? Okay? So those students say, yep, I understand it, I get it, okay. How can we give them opportunities? How can we challenge them? Right? And go beyond that, go beyond that. How can we give them extended learning opportunities to show what they know? To push them a little bit further. So we're all, we're always thinking about those questions. And then, something that we heard in the conference that was really powerful was all means all. It's not just the special education teachers, it's not just Susie Griffith, the classroom teachers, it's everyone. Everybody is responsible. So we heard this crosswalk analogy. And it was like, you know, when we look at data, and we see, oh, 80%, you know, proficient, or 80% have an A. And we're like, okay, yeah, we're at 80%, that's great. Okay, but what about that 20%? Are we okay with that, or are we not okay with that? So someone said, think about students crossing a crosswalk. 80% get across equally. Are we okay with those 20%? What about those 20% of kids who didn't cross the street? So, wow, okay. Like, we really got, we really got to look at that. So if we truly believe all means all, that all hands on deck, it's going to fight our teachers, every student. So how do we make that happen?
So, that's where I jump in. So some of the things that we learned while we were there was this idea that if you can catch students, if our students, by the time they leave first grade, are reading proficiently, then they stay on that green trajectory. When they are not reading proficiently, they stay on that red trajectory, and we are constantly playing catch-up with intervention. And that, that gap just keeps widening, and we put time and energy into that gap that may or may not decrease. So knowing this information now, which we've always known, people talk about early intervention all the time, and something that Newfields feels an impact on is that we do not have a pre-school. And that is actually a very significant thing. So for us, spending a lot of resources, time, and energy focused in on K1 is now becoming something that the faculty is making a huge priority, so that we know that our goal is by the time our first graders leave first grade, all of them are reading. That's when Christina talks about all hands on deck. That may mean that there is a 30-minute period that our music teacher has, okay, well, that might be that he's reading on a typical basis, on a typical weekly basis, with our kindergarteners or first graders, whatever we decide that intervention is that those students need. This is now becoming one of our priorities, that our K1, when we make decisions, that means schedule, that means where we use our resources. One of our decisions now, and our priorities, is from this data, which is that we are going to emphasize our K1.
Susie, are you in particular calling out reading here, or similarly from reading in math? I just...
It's, it's, reading is what the...
Yeah.
Because that affects every part of the rest of their education.
Totally get it, yeah. Thank you.
So the benefits, obviously, our personalized attention. If there are smaller groups in our kindergarteners and first-grade classes, they get more personalized attention, there's better learning, there's stronger connections, there's a common environment. All those things add up to make a difference. And so, again, this is where we are putting a lot of our priority and channeling our energy towards. So when we say all hands on deck, we want to be able to make sure that we increase that intervention time for those students in K1, that we give learning, extended learning opportunities for students who are skilled in a certain area. Like I said, utilizing our UA teachers in creative ways. And then, this is a big one, and it's a shift for a lot of schools, but grouping students by need, not greed, that's a really huge paradigm shift. And it is a shift for parents and for students. But the efficiency that happens when you take a group of students that need to learn in addition, and you do it in a thoughtful way, can be really powerful.
And I would really love being a special education teacher, to be able to have more time for Tier Two, to be able to go into the classroom more, like, if I don't have to pull kids out of the classroom as much. I'll be able to go into the classroom more and co-teach, and give interventions in that environment, which is...
Can you explain what Tier Two and Tier Three mean? I mean, just so the whole, everybody here kind of has an idea what that means.
Tier One is like your, your classroom instruction, regular instruction. Tier Two would be if you have some heroes that need some review or more practice of a skill, to give them those interventions. So that's available to all students, not just students who are identified and have an ID. Tier Three would be those intense interventions that they might need to be pulled out of class to work on specific skills with a special education teacher. So it's just kind of...
All right. Another thing that we were challenged by was this idea of a visual cultural audit. When you walk through our building, what is it that you are reading in our physical space? Are you reading that we are student-centered? Are you reading that our values are up? Are you seeing that we honor student work? Are you... All of those things. And so, as a faculty, we're spending a lot of time on answering these questions. We do think that we've done, actually, an exceptional job with giving them sensory options, which are standing desks, different types of seating. We have two rotary bikes now, no, stationary, it's not rotary, stationary bikes that kids can pop onto. So there's lots of options for them. And what that means is that they don't get antsy during their, their learning, and they can actually stay engaged for a longer amount of time. So we're in the middle of doing this audit, and it'll take us the whole year, but we're really excited about this. So that, I'll give you an example. Right now, we're challenged of creating something that is highlighting students for the values that we believe in. If you walked our house right now, you would not see that. So we need to create that, because we do value it, and we want to be able to highlight that for our students and families and faculty. Anything you want to add to that, Christina?
No, I think, you know, this year is a really big year for new staff. We have a lot of new staff members, new parents, and teachers. And I think it is really important to have this conversation of the, of the culture of the school, and what do we believe in? And then, all be on the same page, where, okay, if this is what we believe in, let's do it. Let's show it. So, anybody?
All right, so wrapping it all up. We just wanted to let you know the importance of attending Talk to Your Professional Development. Like Christina said, it was absolutely spectacular. It may have been the best meeting that I've had in my professional career. And it was also really quite... It was just so valuable to go with team members. I have gone by myself, and, and you don't get to collaborate at the level when you're with other team members, especially people who are on the ground. And I was really grateful, we were all grateful that Ellen came, because she's a 60,000-foot view, I'm a 30, and then you've got the people on the ground. So when we talk about having professional development in our budget, this is really what we're talking about, and it's super impactful.
I mean, we were done at four o'clock one day, and then we were like, all right, we got to go back to the hotel. Right after four. Really just, yeah.
Very diligent.
Yes. And then, and then... Comments from the peanut gallery? The, and parts of the professional learning communities within our school, and making sure that we're asking those essential questions, because that drives our instruction and our reflection about our instruction, our vision and our goals, that idea of all means all. The, kind of that decision that we've made about early literacy, that impacts our all hands on deck. And then, we're doing that internal audit this year. That's it.
It's fantastic. Thank you, guys, so, so much. Yeah, that was, that was an awesome trip. I've heard nothing but positive feedback about the, the conference, so...
I haven't had that much.
A national conference.
Right. Yeah. So I hope that...
That's great. Did anybody on the board have any additional questions for either Susie or Ms. B.?
Yeah, I did. I know you were talking about, like, the professional learning communities. How, what other professional communities that don't exist now that do you think that you would want to create, kind of, from this experience?
Sure. We would love to potentially look at our fifth grades across the SAU, especially our smaller schools, and start collaborating, you know, even greater than Alnaba. How do we get those systems up and running? Anytime Joel Azir has done, and Senior Leadership Team has done a great job of creating space for job-alikes. So right now in the SAU, when we have a professional development, all of our librarians are together, and they learn off of each other. You know, all of our musicians are together, music teachers. That's been working really well. I always feel strongly that, especially for singleton schools, which is what we are, that means one single class per grade, it's really important for there to be collaboration, so that that teacher doesn't think that they're in a silo, and they get to see what other second-grade classes around the SAU are doing, or second-grade classes, you know, in, in other states. And of course, you guys know I was fortunate enough to go over, over to England. Those are amazing opportunities that really just widen your perspective.
Are you looking at who from, who else from the SAU went, other than Newfields?
So every school has taken staff members to, their, their conferences are everywhere. They're in San Francisco, they're in Charlotte. So they're at different times. CMS has taken a group.
Yeah, it's SAU 16 lines, yeah.
Yeah. Every school so far has taken a group.
And so you get to share this out with everybody else to kind of help out this whole entire organization?
MTSS is our whole...
Yep. Awesome.
No, I think that's great. I really appreciate that you came back and shared that with us. It takes time, and it takes a lot of motivation to keep going when things feel tough. And so just know that we're here to support you, and bring the concerns to us, and tell us how we can help.
If I can, just ask, is there any questions from the public? Did you guys have any? Yeah?
Have you considered involving the community members in any of this learning? I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, as a former teacher, is there something I could do in the school system? And I think some of my competitors have similar desires. Some schools have grandparents come, you know, preach it for a mother type thing. I don't know how effective that is, but if there were things that you could use...
Yep. I, I love that question, because now that we've started really honing in on what this group of faculty members believe in, then we can make action steps off of that. So you're exactly right. Like, now that you're saying, oh, we need a lot of time and energy for our kindergarten and first graders to not only be seeing print, but hearing it, that would be a beautiful opportunity for community members to come in and volunteer time, and just sit with different groups of children and read.
The difference between reading and advertising, reading...
100%.
That's why the smaller classes are so important too.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's, that's a great thought.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay. So the next item, I think we're gonna, 4.2, we're gonna have, and save for not public, at the end, just so we can not have to kick everybody out and have you come back in, that would be a little awkward. So the next item on the agenda is Section 5, reviewing the minutes. The only input I had was, I think, Jody Bennett, her last name wasn't identified on the video, so if we could just add her last. It said, "Jody, don't know her last name."
That was the only one.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, I'll promote to accept the public meeting minutes for October 2nd.
Check it. All right, all on paper?
Aye.
Okay, beautiful. Any comments or feedback on the non-public meeting minutes? Which I can never really make any sense of, any non-public minutes, but...
No.
I don't have any.
Nope.
So...
They're always, they're always very brief intentionally.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I don't mean that as a commentary on, I just don't know how I could suggest any changes. But, so I make a motion to accept the non-public minutes from October 2nd. 2nd?
October 2nd.
Okay, all in favor?
You were there for that.
Yep.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so it goes past. Fantastic. Next up, Central Office Update, Superintendent's Office.
Yes, and I know we have the update on the use of the impact fees there, just us, I think it's helpful for all of our learning to keep coming back to the total amounts that we have there. So, and I know we, we authorized the, I believe, was it $2,000, or up to $2,200? I can't recall.
$25.
For the use of TF Moran. And so, but, so as of September 9th, there were, the total amount was $42,575. So that would mean that today it would be $40,575, and of which $7,825 needs to be spent by December 10th. We need, we need, it needs to be spent by the end of the year. And to add to that, we need to have a plan in place to spend that money, again, just that $7,825, by December 10th of 2025.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's, that's the, the impact fees.
Okay.
And then, and I know we'll talk more about that as we talk about the school safety project.
Right.
And then, also, I would say that with regards to the Superintendent's Office, just general updates, is that it's budget season. We are working hard and building budgets and revising budgets, and making sure that we're prioritizing, being fiscally conservative. So we are just knee-deep in that process. And November is when all of our boards are having a first review of the budgets, hence why we have our lovely Budget Advisory Committee members here tonight. Thank you again for coming, all of you, for your time and your engagement and your input. That will be forthcoming this evening. So that's really the major update, is that it's budget season, and along, you know, we're on our way. As I said, November's the first review, and then December's another review, January, public hearings for SB2 towns. February is the celebrative session, and then voting in March.
Perfect. Thank you. I, I know we had had previous discussion about, and we're going to have more discussion about the $40,000 later as part of the larger piece...
Yes.
For the Safety Committee. Does part of that conversation, did part of that conversation focus on the $7,800 that was set to expire, and if we have plans as part of that Safety Committee? Or I know we had talked at the last two meetings about other potential projects.
Yeah, I would ask Jane to weigh in as well, but from my recollection, we didn't necessarily talk about the $7,825. We talked about how to kind of figure out this, how to fund the overall project, and the various options that we have to fund that. So no, we didn't necessarily delve into the $7,825, but I know this, we did.
Right.
I believe it was our October meeting, we talked about some potential options for that.
If you can excuse me for one second, I just have to...
Yes.
Left my order, exit. Let my board exit. Okay. Just letting you out now. I will promise not to text anymore during the meeting. Okay, so that's helpful. Suzie, there were other sort of school related things that we had talked about that potentially utilizing the funds. I know Molly always sets me straight as to how we actually are utilizing those funds and so please.
We would need to have a public hearing to be able to accept and expend those funds.
Unless it was part of something that was already.
Yeah.
Remind me again of the context we're in.
If it, well, if you're, if you want to receive the funds and you are going to breach your overall appropriation, then you would have to have a public hearing to be able to accept and expend it, it's actually range of the appropriate amount. If you don't feel like you're going to breach your appropriation on it, then you can accept those funds and it would be unanticipated revenue. So it's really a public hearing is needed and you need to go above the appropriation of your total budget.
Which is why we didn't need the public hearing for the $2,000.
For the previous, right. And I guess what's the criterion that makes us know that we're not going to go beyond?
You won't know that until it probably goes to the end of the year.
Right, that's, that's always a little.
The budget is what you're appropriating to spend.
Yeah.
So if you feel like by taking this money and expending this money, you're gonna go over your vote of appropriation.
Correct.
You have to have a public hearing and then the board have to vote to be able to accept and expend that money. If not, if there's no public hearing, it's just you're accepting money, but it would, it wouldn't raise your appropriation up.
Right.
Okay.
Jane, do you have any?
Does that make sense?
Kinda, no.
It does in theory, but.
I mean, it does, but it doesn't like.
So when we go to the ballot in, in March, right, we vote on appropriation. That is the authority to expend. It has nothing to do with revenue, it's just the authority to spend that amount of money. Now, if we feel that we are going to spend more because we have this new revenue source to us that was unidentified, we can accept, because a long, long time ago, we put on the ballot to be able to accept and expend unanticipated revenue.
Oh, yep, okay.
And so this is an unanticipated revenue source that has come available to us. And we can hold a public hearing to be able to accept and expend that money. Meaning we can now raise the appropriation by that number of money.
Okay. So one of the things that I heard and learned last month that I think, I can say confidently that I think it's important from my perspective that we consider is perhaps hiring somebody to do a capital improvement plan. Which the general estimate that we heard was that it was around $10,000.
Correct.
We don't have a crystal ball if we're gonna be going over the appropriated funds, but.
I mean, it's.
What would your recommendation be?
To have a public hearing, it takes five minutes.
Okay.
You just have to post for it, you have to post in the paper, I think it's seven days in the year. We will present the funds that are available and what we're asking to accept.
Okay.
Right.
We also didn't have a public hearing a couple of years ago when we authorized the use of the impact fees to pay for this project scope work. We did, and that was about $30,000. So is it your recommendation, you make the final call as to whether or not we need that public hearing?
That's the question I'm trying to tease up.
Who tells us whether or not we need that public hearing as to whether or not we're going to breach appropriation?
Nobody would be able to tell us until it gets closer to the end of the year.
But these decisions are often made in advance of.
So the safer option is to have a public hearing.
Well, let's just do the public hearing.
Gotcha.
Let's make sure that we have access to that money when we need it.
Can I ask the board, if, if, if it's okay? Of the several topics that came up as potentially, you know, ways that we can utilize that money so that we don't, so that we don't lose the opportunity to utilize that money. The one to me that sort of has the closest threshold to that amount and is very relevant to a lot of the conversation that we're having. And I think it would be personally a good investment so that we have a plan for the future is the capital improvement plan. Are there other items on there that you recall that you would want to prioritize?
The only thing that I can think of, and this is again, all up for discussion, is for TF Moran to put a plan set together. So this is the next step.
After.
After the concept design. And I don't know how much that would cost. But otherwise, that would be put into whatever we would pull together for the bond, that would be inclusive into the bond. So if we can find out, I can always find out how much that is, the plan set, so that it's done. And if the driveway project, safety project moves forward, then that gives us a month to be able to say, okay, plan set is done. We can immediately send this out to bed and we know exactly what's going to be pulled together. Because we right now just have a concept design.
It's November now, our next meeting is December.
Yep.
Would, I don't have the date in front of me, but would that date give us enough time to do a public hearing with enough notice? So that we would be able to say by the end of December 10th, through that time? Like I just don't want us to lose the opportunity to utilize this money.
So you could, either way, we're gonna spend it on the operating budget or it'll be reimbursed. So yes, we would like to have the public hearing first, just in case for whatever reason it's not approved. But in the chance that it's not approved, we can always.
And I think what you're also asking is how, how much advance notice do we need to post the public hearing and whatnot?
Yeah.
I believe it's seven days, well, I think it has to be in the paper seven days before the meeting. So there are paper deadlines, which is usually.
So our board meeting is December 4th, just to point that out there.
We could do it before the board meeting.
Right, you could do it at five thirty.
Right.
One option.
Okay.
I would say let's, we could go ahead and do that. And regardless if we spend it on, you know, a plan set or, you know, you know, the improvement plan.
Because that's what could be discussed at the public.
We can decide that at that point. That's not relevant and I can come with a more.
I, I agree.
Kind of idea of what that's gonna cost. And that's something that would not need to be put into the bond.
Can we facilitate that, Ellen?
Yes, and did you want to do both, both the plan set? I mean, we don't have an amount for the plan set, so are we talking about a public hearing to use the impact fees for both a plan set and a capital improvement study?
That would definitely.
I mean.
That would be beyond the amount that we have for the seven, but we could go beyond, yeah.
That's just the $7,825, just that's what we have to spend by December 10th. My point is like, do we want to, do you want to be efficient and have one public hearing and tackle both of these items?
And then as a board, sorry, as a board, so if we have a public meeting at five thirty, at the meeting at six, we could decide which one, if either, we would want to move forward with. Is that correct?
I hope so, yeah. I'm looking.
Or neither, right, if we decide.
You could decide either.
Or both, alright, that's helpful. If you can facilitate the posting for that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, Sharon just has a public hearing, I can share.
Awesome, thank you, Molly.
Since we're talking a lot about public, I feel like I said the word public ten times. We do have public in here. Any comments or thoughts about that?
I'd like to see you use and not use those funds.
Yeah.
Correct.
That seems a little silly.
We agree.
Hope, did you want to talk, or do you still want to wait? Because.
Don't wait, do you? It's what I'm saying about if you're gonna have some discussion on the safety.
Yes, yeah.
It would be prudent for me to hear and get that knowledge.
I agree.
My knowledge level on that, the fire department, the police department is zero, basically. And so for me to punch. And then find out that some of these issues have been covered or where there's some holes, you would see the doubt till February.
Okay, perfect. Excellent, thank you. That was, I feel like we have a plan and we have enough accountability that those monies will not go unused.
Did we settle on five thirty on December 2nd?
I'm sorry, 4th is the board meeting, so it would be the Thursday of December 4th, so five thirty on that day, yeah.
That's what everyone's agreeing to?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm gonna put that in my calendar now, so I block it. Five thirty, okay, thank you. The next item is the budget. Take it away.
So Sharon, Jane printed some copies here, so.
Not this Jane.
Other Jane. There's kind of been two sections. So everyone can get one of these.
It's the fourth?
Fourth, at five thirty. While we're getting that ready, I do want to acknowledge Suzie and Ellen and Molly are often one of the first folks in the SAU to get work, in my, from my understanding, to get this conversation started and then tends to be very efficient with it. And also very, the numbers tend to be one of the, the most favorable, at least in terms of potential changes. So thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. Okay.
So, well Suzie's gonna hear a glass, I can explain the two documents in front of you. So this comes here with the summary, several lines. This is the printout directly from our accounting system. It's our line by line budget for every line in Newfield budget. The other document is your summary page. The reason why up at the top we break it out between what's called general fund and food service fund is if we were to finish in a positive fund balance on food service fund, that is not given back as part of the tax rate. None of the elementaries ever finish in a positive fund balance in that saving bill. So it's really, we don't need to break it out, but I do break it out just because we do have to do funds. And then below that, we did what we call major changes. So in here, you're gonna see a lot of ups and downs, you're gonna see a lot of things that didn't change. And so what we did is we said, what are the major drivers of the budget? And I'll, Suzie will go through that in a minute. However, on the second page, what I did is, we've been talking a lot about this in the joint board meeting, so I recognize that members of the public aren't part of that meeting. We have grants, we have title grants, IDPA. And many years ago, the decision was made to flow that through the SAU budget. So what happens is when we vote on appropriation, it's the authority to expend. It's not, the amount is raised in taxation, it's the authority to expend, right? And so grants have always been appropriated as part of the SAU budget. But for years now, the auditors have been telling us, no, it really needs to be part of the district budget. The district is the legal owner. And so with the turnover in superintendents, we, for superintendent, it wasn't very tight. Then it began last year, then the first year, then last year. So Dr. Andruski has really taken his stance and said, yes, we are gonna do it right this time. And we are appropriating it as part of the district budget. However, there is no impact on taxation. And the reason why is grant expense equals grant revenue. And so what happens is we, before we can do any grant project or salary or whatever it might be, we have to write the activity, it has to be approved by the state. Then we do the work or the person does the work, we pay for it. And then we bill the state and they send us back the money and we review the expense. So expense always equals revenue, so it's a net zero. However, we have to include it in the overall appropriation as an authority to expend, because you're gross appropriate. And so that's why it will be added to our appropriation this year, but I put in big, bold, black letters, no impact on taxation. And so this year, we'll kind of see three sections. We'll see the general fund, the food service fund, and the grants. And same as the grants, the food service fund, for the most part, is self sustaining. There is a part that is covered as a loss by the general fund. But everything that's in Fund 14, the actual food service fund, revenue equals expense when we set the tax rate. So the part that drives your taxes is the general fund portion. Okay? So I don't know, Suzie, do you want to talk about the major changes?
Sure. So we always try to bring forth a fiscally responsible budget. Almost every single line in the budget from what I control is zeroed. We are staying flat lined, with the exception of one thing, which is that professional development line of $4,500. That is from the potential of bringing more of those teachers to professional development, like you just heard our presentation over. Otherwise, everything in the, in this budget is contractual. So I, I work with our faculty to say where we are as a society. We need to do, everyone is doing more with less. And so we are presenting a budget in which we'll stay where we are this year, with the exception of that professional development line.
And so the other lines, the salary line, a lot of that is dictated by your collective bargaining agreement. Where you have two collective bargaining agreements here, you have the teachers and the paraprofessionals. The paraprofessionals, the paraprofessionals are in a negotiation year. So they come across as is. So they stay exactly where they're at today in next year's budget. And one article two will have the increase for the paras. Everything else was either a step or track for the collective bargaining, the teachers. And any non-union employees were put in at a three percent raise. FICA and NHRS New Hampshire retirement will fluctuate because that is a function of salary. FICA is 7.65% salary, New Hampshire retirement is 12.75% for employees and 19.23% for teachers. The big, the biggest increase is health and dental. So across SAU, we offer various plans. Each plan has slightly, or had a different rate. It ranged anywhere from 14.8 to I think it was 20.1% increase. And so we took a look at where everyone was at today and increased that accordingly. The provision for retirement in the collective bargaining agreement, as well as individual contracts, we do have a provision for retirement when someone reaches the end of their career. And we did have a change in the persons eligible to retire. So there are people that are eligible, they have not put into retirement. But if they were to put in for retirement, we have to be able to afford it. And so we did have a change in the number of people that are eligible. The Office of the Superintendent, that is the SAU assessment. So that was already voted on by the joint board and that is divided up into all the districts. It was actually a zero percent increase across, if you add all the districts together. But the way it's divided between the districts is half on ADM, which is your average daily membership, which is essentially attendance.
School attendance, right.
And then half is equal valuation, meaning your times valuation. And so those are 50% weighted. So depending on how you moved in relation to the other districts within SAU 16, some won, some lost. So here, yours did go up a little bit, which means other districts or other towns went down a little bit.
Where is that located?
On the front. It's the Office of the Superintendent.
Oh.
And then first student is our, our buses. And so at the end of last year, they renegotiated a contract. And this is the corresponding increase. And then everything else at 4,646 is every other line in this budget added together.
Molly, as far as the, thank you for explaining both of you. That's fantastic. Just that last point about the first student, I know that I was so impressed, I think it was last year or the year before, learning how Newfields is creative with saving taxpayers' funds to do something very interesting with the bus routes, whatever.
You're talking about the double run?
The double run, so.
Yeah, so what happened?
Did that continue to some extent with the?
Yes, yes. So all of, so we have a double run. So the middle school and high school start first and then the elementary start later. So all the buses actually do the high school and middle school first and circle back and do the middle school and elementary school. So there is a single run price, so if they just do one run. And then the double run price, it's, it's much less than twice the single run.
So that continues?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So every single elementary bus is part of a double run and then the cooperative has three actions.
Thank you. But Jane, have anything else you wanted to add?
I, I, it's important to add, I think, that, you know, we do build this budget with the idea of being fiscally conservative, as I had already mentioned. But that, I think it's reflected very well within the bottom line of the budget. And you can see that the, you know, even though we're at 5.05%, a lot of it is, and most of it, is not within our locus of control.
Yeah.
And across the districts, health insurance is the big one.
Across everything, yeah. So yeah, I want to make sure that we have the budget advisory committee and the rest of the board have a chance to ask questions.
I'm okay for now.
Okay. Okay, Karen, did you want to?
Is the health being natural 100% coverage for employees or do employees pay?
So, employees pay, um, it does vary by, by type of employee. So, the teachers, it's all outlined in the collective bargaining agreement, same with the paraprofessionals. And the individual contracts is outlined in the individual contract.
What, what is the average percentage that is paid for?
Um, and Newfield, I can bring it up, HR has a pool.
The CBAs, I didn't actually, this, just to share my arguments, you know, five years ago, when I started this, before I started this process, I didn't realize that the CBAs are all available publicly. Yeah, so just for the purposes of anybody out there, that is publicly available, I think on our website.
Yes.
So, um, a lot of codes there. So, Newfield offers an A B 10, which I think is in H M R?
I think so.
Um, and that is 80% district pay for the teachers, administrators, school secretary, and pares. For, and then, but then, that's for a single. And then for a two-person, it's 80% for teachers, administrators, school secretary, and pares receive the benefit of the single plan. Or, if they wanted, if they wanted to be, they have to be the difference. Same for the pares for a family plan. And again, it's 80% for teachers, administrators, and school secretary. Then there's an open access PPO, which is a, the high deductible plan, and that appears to be all the same percentages.
That's for a couple of years.
Or in the individual contracts for those not in the collective bargaining. And dental, dental, it looks like it is 100% covered for the dental, but dental is much less expensive.
Jen, the jet?
Sorry, it's 100% for a single.
For paraprofessionals?
For the, for the dental, it looks like it's 100% for this, for a single plan. And then anybody else has to pay the difference.
I would be to shed a little more insight into the, the health insurance, um, as a whole. I mean, I'm a physician, so I, I help insurance companies. I've been a small business owner, so I've had every year in the fall, looking at various insurance options through my employees. Employee position, so I have to choose from the, the types of areas. So, every year, when I was an employer, I would get various quotes for insurance plans. And usually, what we would do is we would disable a little bit. You know, we would look at maybe the deductible increases, maybe the copays are higher, et cetera. So, I'm not talking about the 80% or whether the teachers are responsible. Who's making those decisions as to which health plans or even options, you know, is that something the SAU is doing? Is it our school board doing it? I mean, who even decides which plans are going to be the ones that are coming under really budgetary purposes?
So, that would be human resources.
Right.
Unfortunately, they're not here today.
Yes, it would be our human resources. So, Heather Murray is our Director of Human Resources, and she is the person, yes, that has that purview. And she, again, like operates with, you know, the mindset of being as fiscally conservative as possible and choosing the plan that is, you know, viable for, you know, the budgets that we have.
And I believe that, that health, that actual plan is documented in the collective bargaining agreements as well.
I think that's a, a great question, I'm glad you're asking. I know for me, I'm currently in the open enrollment for my job. And so, I guess the follow-up question that I would have to that is, is the decision already made for, and/or if it's not? You know, what is the timeline of when that decision happens? Because I think Heather, I think the world of it, I think she's very responsible, and I don't doubt that, but it is helpful to know what the timeline is and who is, is that makes that decision.
You can come, get to view that information, for sure.
But I'm assuming, given what we've had here, if that time has passed?
I believe it's already been set.
Well, this is the rate that Health Trust has set for us for next year. Whether we would have the time to go to a different provider, I would have to defer that to Health.
Yep.
So, Health Trust is our, what's the word?
Provider.
Health Trust is our risk pool, and so, we are part of the Health Trust risk pool.
Is, is there any oversight from this, the SAU board of boards, in, in, in working with Heather, human resources, or get some of these? And so, that's just to say, in fact, you know, all of the schools and the draft list.
And I know Dr. Andruski has been talking with human resources about what might need to happen going forward. I do think it's a larger conversation with the unions, that I would have to defer.
So, yes, it's not something that comes up at the joint board, in my experience. I think it's something, they are conversations that happen, you know, again, as Molly is explaining, between the superintendent and human resources and amongst our senior leadership teams. But we can get more information from Heather Murray, for sure.
There are different plans per district, so this would not be a joint board conversation. It's not the same plans offered at every district. It is very individualized to the individual districts. And each district has their own personal form.
So, if, if it's appropriate, can we possibly ask Heather to either summarize something that we can have here for next month? Or even have her here, or?
Yes, I'll connect with her and we'll figure that out.
Thank you for, in the meantime, trying to answer. It's a very complicated question. It's a good one, I'm glad you're asking it, but, and if there's any way to reassess how it's done moving forward, I think.
Yeah, I know Heather's been doing a lot of research on it.
Yes.
I just.
Um, other than that, are there any other thoughts, comments, input? I know this is, I think, your first time seeing this draft. It's a lot of lines and numbers.
I wonder, Molly, if you have any insights, and some of the districts have had these unexpected, uh, huge points or high numbers. Small districts, but what, what, are there any, what caused those in those other districts to fail on the concrete? Is there anything that puts our district in explosion for some kind of unplanned surprise?
That's a little question, but, um, I mean, I, I'm not the, I mean, they're still uncovering what actually happened there. It's my understanding that, especially in Claremont, that it was currently related, so expenses that were not. Like I said before, we expend the funds and then we get reimbursed by the grant. I believe that has to do with the nominee to be reimbursed. But, again, I'm not part of the investigation.
Sure.
That's just what I've heard. But we are very careful with our grants, and we have a robust approval process for all purchasing. We report every month at the school board meeting as to where we are versus the voted appropriation, as well as any revenue shortfalls. There's the two parts, the expenditure is more than planned or revenue less than planned. Most, all of our revenue is the assessments from the town. We have very little revenue that's not. And when we do question if we're gonna get something or not, we don't put it on the plan revenue. Like, that's why we're able to accept these impact fees as unanticipated revenue. In some districts, they might account for that, and they would actually lower the tax rate going into the year. But, we don't, we don't know for a second. So, those are the things that we set this up for success.
And I believe, and also the trust funds help for any unanticipated, you know, more serious situations that happen that are student-related. I believe what Concord is saying, again, we're not, we're not directly involved in any of this, but I believe what Concord had said is that a lot of their deficits were related to unplanned special education expenses.
Yeah.
So, we make, you know, that's part of our multi-tiered systems of support, right? A lot of our professional learning committees, communities is, it's all connected when we think about that, in terms of, in terms of how we plan and program for students, is that we make sure that we are looking at their data and planning for what might be coming next down the pipe. Even though we don't have first of all, we do a really good job of being proactive and being predictive in our work. And so, I think that's a piece of it too, and having these, you heard Christina and Suzie talk about, you know, the regular special education team meetings that occur, the regular PLC team meetings that occur at a variety of levels. And a lot of that, when we look at student data, we can also have a better sense of like what might be coming for that particular student. And it can be planful.
One of the things that we do, and I tell this to Suzie a million, and all the principals a million times, that we always encumber through the full year. So, what that means is going into the year, we, on our financials that we report to the board every month, we have actuals, which is your expenses to date that have actually gone out the door, and then encumbrances. So, if we have a teacher here for the full year, we know we have to pay her for the full year. So, we encumber those funds to the end market. And so, then the report says what's remaining after your actual expenses and your encumbrances. And so, we always take a good look at that every month. And the report that I send to the board every month says, what is the difference between the actuals and the encumbrances? So, like right now, you're still seeing a lot of things being added. But, once we get into January and February, if I see big swings, I immediately pick up the phone and I'm like, Suzie, what happened? And then we walk through it, and, and if we do have an unanticipated expense, or if a boiler breaks or something like that, then we immediately put a freeze on our purchases and find ways to be able to do it.
So, in summary, we have a lot of systems, I would say, in place to prevent such a thing. We have, plus, we have a very skilled business administrator and an assistant business administrator, and we prioritize a lot of collaboration on one communication to make sure that we're trying to stay ahead of it.
I'll also say that I think one of the goals that we've had as a board and a community is to establish these trust funds, so that we have the ability, like when the boiler did go, a couple of years ago.
Yes.
It didn't result in an automatic huge swing. And so, for example, the special education, if I just happen to pull it up here, we have $134,000 currently there with a goal of 275, because that's sort of, given our scope and the size, that was what was recommended for folks as a goal.
We also had it set up in the office where one person does payroll, a different person does the accounts payable, and then the shall be system Dr. and I review. So, there's not one person that's concerned.
Checks and bills.
Checks and bills.
Yeah.
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. It's interesting that the special ed numbers basically flatlined this year, and it was such a big driver of an increase last year. Is the only reason why it's so stable this year is almost flatlined?
So, to, I don't want to explain.
So, a lot of the work, let me get the conversation started, yes. If anybody wants to exit now and save themselves.
I withdraw the question.
So, I can speak, I can speak to that. So, a lot of the work that we're doing with regards to building our multi-tiered system of support is being proactive and providing interventions in advance. And I think we can say that that has proven, it is proving to be effective. In other words, you know, we are intervening sooner as a way to prevent unnecessary referrals to special education. Because I think, like, when we lack the, a plethora of support, the diversity of supports that are needed, then sometimes we end up with an unreasonable number of referrals to special education, or that just becomes like the default, you know, gosh, we're not sure what to do, let's refer to special education. When in actuality, there's a lot we can do to prevent a referral to special education. Is that a one I would like to say?
Yeah, I'd really like to speak out on this one. My voice will let me. I'm so, Wednesdays are actually one of my favorite days because we meet with the special education team and the broader team, which are our speech, our school psychologist, our behavior specialist. It's such a strong group of individuals in mind, coming up with really creative, thoughtful ways to service students. And so, we haven't had a lot of situations at all where we haven't been able to service the student at our school. In fact, I'd say that we have, uh, um, students that were, I'm so proud of the work that that team has done because the trajectory of a child's life or children's lives have really been changed because of the work that they've done. It's impressive, I love that group.
And we did do an assessment early on in the budget process, where we looked at what funds we were getting for special ed, what funds we were getting from the state and federal. And we had to, you know, we looked at that really carefully, and it wasn't very good for other schools since we are so small. And to Suzie and Ellen's point, we are able to take care of a lot of kids where they're at here. And we haven't had the external, you know, sources coming in currently, which is good. But the trust fund is there if that does need to happen.
That's a good news on the budget, really.
Yeah, that could have killed us.
Yes, absolutely.
Devastated us, yep.
So, um, thank you Budget Advisory Committee for being here. Typically, we have, this is like the first blush, and then what is the timeline process where we want to have things reviewed?
So, we'll take any feedback you have, or any, anything you'd like to see, or if we have a specific, if the board has a specific number, we can work our magic to figure it out.
Write a bottom line number that you maybe have a nine.
To bring back another budget in December. And then, we decide at the December meeting, and we can make a question on what you want to take to a public hearing, which will happen in January. And then, we're making a really great video.
Yes, we are.
Nice.
If anyone wants to star in the video, let us know. We did this for the cooperative last year, and it was very successful, as we did last two years. And so, all the elementaries are doing it as well, so we can post it online, that can be available. And during the public hearing, we'll play it. And, and then, in February, will be the deliberative session, and then the vote in March. And I would just remind you, the pares, that will be on Article Number Two. So, in March, when you vote for the different ordinary goals, what happens is they all get added together to come to your budget. So, this would be this plus your paraprofessional.
But there's also the SAU, the rest of the budget, right? This is just the newness.
So, there's two.
This is not for the middle school, for the high school, or for, then, so.
Yeah, so there's, there's two parts to this tax rate. So, you have two ballots when you vote in, you have the elementary ballot and the co-op ballot. And if you look on your tax card, I was hoping to have all the tax rates set, but the only exit is set right now in that SAU. I do a side-by-side analysis of all of the different towns in SAU, but there's two lines on the new tax card. One is the local school that's here, and one is the co-op school.
And do you know what the co-op, they're seeing?
No, they're at this exact same process we're at right now.
So, they have a budget advisory.
Their meeting's probably coming up, right?
Yeah, they have a budget advisory committee. We meet weekly, we section it out so it's a much bigger budget. And so, this coming Thursday, we're reviewing the middle school. Next week, we'll be reviewing the high school. And then the co-op board will have their budget workshop. It's either December 2nd or 3rd, whenever that Tuesday. And then, at that point in time, they will decide what they want to take to the public hearing.
That works a bit differently there, at the co-op level.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they won't hear it in their November meeting, they'll hear it at the budget workshop in December.
The budget hearing, the budget committee meetings are open to the public or no?
Oh, yeah.
So, if you wanted to go to those, you're welcome to. I think they're posted on the.
Yeah, they're posted, so there's a website, it's called, oh, I just go to my Google bar, type SAU 16 budgets and elections, and then every district pops up. So, it is in the Michael Morgan Center, which is at the SAU office downstairs. We are, the first night, we reviewed the CECO School of Technology, SST, and Adult Education. The second night, we reviewed the facilities and technology. And now, we took a week off for trick or treat. And then, we're reviewing middle school this Thursday and high school next week.
Well, they're welcome.
Yeah. We have not had a single attendee yet, so if you want to come, you're welcome.
Is that yet this year, or?
This year.
Yes, yes.
That's fairly typical.
Yeah, it's very typical, yeah.
Thank you. The only, the only question I had, I was just curious about the software. Do we have any new exciting software coming, or is it just the increased cost maintenance?
Remember, last year, we had all of our new interactive floors?
Right.
So, those have already been implemented. And really, now, it's just making sure that the psychos go, that.
Perfect. That's great. Any other questions? Perfect, alrighty. Do you need anything else from us, Molly?
I just have one question. I know last year, when we wrapped this process, when Rusty looked at it, created a potential larger project over the few years, I think it totaled between $400,000 and paid in, almost. But, but specific to this year, was the LED lighting, I think that was a $40,000 budget item.
Yeah, my underst-
It expanded, what's the status of that?
I did make a note here to ask that at some point, because my understanding is, one, it was part of the budget, and then, two, it needed to be happened this year so we could take advantage of the.
Rebates.
Rebates. And it did come out the last month, so I'm assuming, and hoping there's a plan this year.
I believe it's been covered, right? Because it was.
If it hasn't been, well, we would encumber it when the purchase order is placed. So, if, between changing the facilities, I'm not sure if the purchase order's been placed yet, but as soon as the purchase order is placed, it becomes a cover.
So, to your point, if it didn't come out tonight, I was going to ask it as an item in December. So to your point, um if it didn't come out tonight, I was going to ask it as an item in December, because that would be the last time for us to encumber it. But I would, if I could request that, um happen between now and then.
We'll make sure that that's in cover.
Did you, was there another part or just that? That's important.
The other thing that is left open, I don't know if you have an answer, but the question is how much would you pay to be, you know? Cause that's one reason for doing it this year or several, how much plus the dollar amount that you can, you know, is to be paid for it.
I wasn't part of those conversations, so.
We can find out.
Okay.
I mean, we're all part of the conversations, the conversations happened at this, at these meetings. But the specifics with regards to the dollar amounts and whatnot, I can, I can get that for you. Yeah.
Awesome. Alrighty, I think that's good. Okay, so chew on this. Um we have the opportunity for some feedback. Can you take, how should we direct the Budget Advisory Committee if there's feedback that they have between now and next month?
Well, I think we probably want to understand what everyone wants us to come back with. Could we have an opportunity to say?
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. Um just cause I want to make sure what we bring next month is what the fiscal board and the committee.
Yeah.
Want.
So I'll, I'll speak. I am very much in support of the professional development change, which is, it sounds like the one change that we had um a locus of control over here and what we heard today, the impact of that. I'm not going to recommend any changes to that. Every other piece, with the exception of potentially for next year, when we look at insurance, you know, if we can consider choosing a different vendor or what have you. Um or just understand the process better.
Yes.
I don't have any recommended changes personally.
Nope.
My first time going through the budget process here. And so um one of the things that I I think is is almost impossible that we ask all schools to do is come back at zero dollars when um there are contracted costs that go up every year. And so is there any way in the presentation, contracted costs, if they're not already, are pulled out so that we can say, sure, we're expecting the same quality of education. But we're lowering our quality of education because we have to send money to increase cost production and bus contracts and things that don't really affect kids. And so um hidden sometimes in school budgets are cuts that really hurt because we're trying to come in at a zero budget. And so to be really fair to the school and the district, I think it's important that we don't come in with a base zero because of our contracts. And we're trying to cut a hundred thousand dollars, whatever that looks like. And so my hope would be that we're sustaining our program and growing our programs and not coming back with a cheapest budget because our health insurance went up. Health insurance will always go up and go to the grocery store, tomatoes are sold, but nothing is cheaper for anybody. And that includes schools. And so I just want to say that I hope we can separate that. If there are budget increases or things that are necessary, that we identify why that's important for kids.
And the biggest challenge I've always had with doing a graph like that is if I say this is contract, mandatory contractual obligations, yes. But um not that I want to change any staffing levels in here, but we choose to have this. Like we do have the ability to up and decrease staffing levels. So when we say it's mandatory contractual, it's you also have the, you have, you choose how many people you want to have. So sometimes it's hard to say that's a mandatory expense. Um so that's the biggest challenge we've always had in doing graphs like that.
But you have separated it out overall with regards to what's driving the changes.
Right, so we did, like we did the major changes here.
Right.
And then I also have like another pie chart that says this is salary, this is non-salary, um stuff like that. But sometimes to say it's mandatory contractual, like like for example, buses, we have two buses here. Could you do one? Not necessarily do it, but like that's also choices that we could talk about. So to say it's a mandatory expense, it's sometimes hard in this league.
Maybe I'll just keep saying that the moving. It's really important to me that we're not cutting at the expense of kids to match the rates.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do a graph, it's just every time we do the graph, someone points out something that's that makes it.
Yeah.
Difficult.
I think it is helpful to keep talking about it and being open about kind of what our goals are, which is, I like how you phrase that, Brian. The goal is not to just maintain, right? The goal is to, is to evolve and grow our programming, grow our practices and build capacity within our staff through ongoing professional development. Right, so I I do think that is a help, a helpful way to frame it.
One, maybe I'm more, I have a first grader and I have a high schooler and I, and I want my first grader to have whatever we're going to do next year or the year after. And I don't want to wait five years for some sort of plan to come together if there's an opportunity for my, my own child, okay? And the kids that are here, so anything that's good would be good now, sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and so with the video, I think we'll do a big time.
Yeah, I like that.
Having kids tell the story. And so one of the biggest things is we want to involve kids in the video and and show them all the great things that are happening in the school. And then I'll also show the major changes that we have listed here. And Suzy will probably do a voiceover on explaining all the great things.
This voice.
We'll gargle a little bit, right?
And then we'll show some graphs and we can show, uh pie charting, show salary and non-salary and stuff like that.
Thanks. I might have a little of a time, but I did see Karen get the hand.
Is there change in staffing for you?
No.
I think that would be important, obviously.
That's a good point, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Molly, do you have what you need from us? It sounds like no changes.
I just have the manifest floating around.
Yes, so um Brian hasn't signed, I didn't want to interrupt um the flow, but alright, we signed those from him. We'll get to those before. Alright, thank you. Yeah, so um beautiful, if we can move on to the principals report, that is next on the agenda.
Absolutely. We did most of the principals report in our.
Yeah.
Presentation, I do want to highlight a few things that have been happening. One is our students and conferences are happening. This is where students have the opportunities to share with their parents their goals and things that they've already accomplished this year. Those are happening this Thursday and next Thursday. Another exciting thing that's happened is we um a couple of years ago read the book Quiet. And it talks about how um our world indefinitely, our school system is set up for extroverts. And that we do not give introverts very many opportunities to recharge. And so we've implemented for our third, fourth and fifth graders a quiet lunch, which is just like literally no talking. They can color, they can read and eat their lunch. On Monday, one third of our students participated in that. And then today, one half of them participated in that. So that's leaving our cafeteria or our multipurpose room quieter. And it's also giving a space for students again who want to be reflective or just want to be um have some alone time with their own thoughts. That opportunity. It it does speak in in my professional opinion to how overstimulated students are. And um for us to give another student experience that meets them and their needs and student choice feels really good to our faculty.
I have to say, when I saw that I'm up in home, I was so appreciative. I actually like, I'm a pretty social person, but I personally love taking as an adult, my own lunchtime and having quiet reflective time. And what a great way to introduce that concept to a young kid, you know, in a setting that's not like they're sitting by themselves because they, you know, aren't social or anything. They just want to have some independent time.
I did hear about it and all good things. Like it was just like, oh, that was kind of interesting, that was kind of cool. You know, it was a lot of hubbub and it was really positive, so great, I love that. I would love that as a kid.
I'm gonna try it tomorrow.
Good luck.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for Suzy? I recognize the time. I also recognize that, Suzy, you are a very important member of the N E S School Safety Committee. So um I and many folks are here for that purposes. So if the board is okay, um the next section is committees, perhaps we can do the School Safety Committee first. Have that discussion and then some of you, Rivon, we can have a good idea. Okay, Jane said, thank you for pivoting.
Excuse me, I've got a bit of a conflict.
Yeah. Oh, I know. Again, also a member of the Safety Committee, do you have any contributions you want to add on your way out?
Cutting work.
Okay, thanks, bye.
So the updates that I have from the Safety Committee, we met last week, last week. And um we effectively came away with a couple of different things. One being um to go back and get some updated plans so that we can effectively talk to the community about it. And to just get some, just clarity on it. What, cause the, the plan that we have right now isn't exactly what we're proposing. It it's like, it just needs a couple of tweaks. And Keith, who is the vice chair, will go back and get some updated um, but not the, the quotes. To make sure that we have a good idea that what we are potentially putting on a bond would be what we're going to do. The other thing that we had talked about, um which is more germane to the budget and the bond, is um the impact of the bond itself. As well as um paving, regardless of this project, if this passes or not, paving has to be done. So um that was one of the things that the, effectively the group recommended is to put the paving of this, of at least what's existing. If this does not pass, if this project does not pass, then regardless, we have to pave. So we, we now have no money to pave if we don't put that in the budget. So um to make sure that um two things happen. We get the paving done that we need to have done, that we want for that in the current twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven budget. And um overarching, it reduces the overall cost. We don't have to put together a six hundred thousand dollar bond and put together half a million dollar bond. And that gets, you know, partially paid for from the general um fund and from the bond.
My understanding, again, I'm not on the committee, but it is on video, so if anybody in the community wants to watch it, you can, thank you for arranging that. The committee didn't have the full detail of all of the subcomponents of the cost. And so uh the spirit of the recommendation was that we consider doing that, but we need to really see what the numbers are in order to actually be able to recommend that approach.
The, the general consensus is we'd like to make sure that the bond does not exceed five hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty much the consensus, you know? It's not two million, it's not two point four, it's not one million. But I think a half a million is a reasonable ask. So but with the paving that needs to get done, that does significantly reduce this um in general. So tho- those were kind of the takeaways from the last meeting in general.
I, I do appreciate, I want to acknowledge, um again, Hope, I know you said, uh from your perspective, you're, um, there's some gaps in your, uh, in terms of the status of where things are at. Um and I think you're probably not alone in people in town. Our next phase of the committee is to do a lot of communication um with, of all the work that has been done. I recall last February, when we had our deliberative session, and there was a lot of deliberating that happened. One of the um things that I had asked to happen at, at the board meeting that followed that deliberation was to set up a committee to actually move the puck here. So we've been talking about this, some version of this for twenty years.
Twenty years?
We, the community.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So some of those, and I learned that having done some um research and conversations with um community leaders over the years to inform that. And so there were some observations that things needed to be addressed for a long time. Things continued, time continued, and there were additional concerns that were identified. So in earnest, the conversation hasn't been happening, uh the current conversation for twenty years, but components of it have. There were suggestions and recommendations made at that deliberative session that I think I can confidently say the committee is really taking into account in the conversations that are happening. And I, we thanked the committee and Jane's leadership last month, and I'll do it again. You guys are meeting a lot of, doing a lot of volunteer time, planning, incorporating people's perspectives and coming up with practical solutions. So um I think that is, from my perspective, what I want folks in town to hear, whether or not you have kids in the school, whether or not you've been here a hundred years, whether or not you just moved in. That's going to be an important next step.
So to your point, the next step of the committee is to get the final little details and then really start talking to everybody. Talking to the select board, talking to the conservation committee, talking to the fire department, talking to parents, everything. That's what I was kind of hoping that we would get to last meeting, but that's what we're going to get to next meeting is all the committee members, not just the board. All of the committee members are going to come together and make sure that we get out what this is. But what kind of questions do you have?
So.
And I can at least answer what I know.
Okay, so let me uh kind of segue into this. First of all.
Yeah.
It was perfect that we saw that slide and gave it to you in the crosswalk. Because I'm, I'm slipping, I'm gonna segue right into that. We have a minute, right, but I'm the chair of the select board. And this is a huge issue for us in a couple of ways because the four years I've been on the board, three and a half years of working for the police chief, we've all identified the problem that we had here. I spent forty five years of my professional career and grounded in aviation safety. And you're always looking for a solution to prevent the chain of breaking. You're looking to mitigate the threat and put it into it. And then if you have a plan A, like you have, and I believe you have a plan B, what's your plan C? To mitigate and and put the problem down. And especially with the threat and the risk to all the kids, this is such a high priority issue. Yeah, I appreciate all the work you guys have done. I would just offer, just as a sign of your point, just a little bit ago, I would encourage the board, I think, to take as soon as possible advantage of talking with the police chief, fire chief.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, as, as early as possible before you go out to the community.
Sure.
To get their engagement in it, because I've, I've had long conversations with the police and fire chief and kind of have an idea of where they are. That said, so in the past, because the reason we started out is sidewalk, steps coming down and crossing one. In the past, and then we went through the past two years, which is all history, so we don't need to go there.
Hope, I just wanted to, um, the conversation that you, you were a part of, and forgive me for interrupting, was about the, the crosswalk. But what I, my point that I made before is that there has been a community conversation about safety on this property that predates.
I don't disagree with that, Bobby, I'm just saying that the people, the police department and the fire department are, are special, are an echelon above the general community. As far, and currently in the select board, because we're responsible, it's the select board for the safety and the one for the P D, and they've worked with me in the past. In the past week, we probably had five incidences with Sun Angle, where it is, where local citizens who drive this road every day are fully cognizant of the twenty mile limit. And are doing twenty mile hours, have homeless hit the officers out there. They have stuff, they include F B I agent, they include other police officers, and they stop and say, I can't see you. And so dealing with that at the local level between the select board, myself, or myself, the fire chief and the police chief, what they're going to do is they're going to put, if you remember on Main Street, we had those in the center lane there. We had their about this high and they said caution crosswalk. We're gonna put one of those out for now. We're talking about putting a signboard up by that tree on, on the school's property there, caution ahead danger or something, just to get people's attention. So because it is such a serious issue, I don't know if you guys have driven it in the morning. Yeah, and that sun angle, but you, you cannot see.
That blinker light is out heavily.
So, oh, for the twenty mile hour rule? Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking further in, on the grassy lot right next door.
Right, he wants to.
The blinker, the blinker light doesn't.
Well, as it been reported?
Yes.
Okay. I'll talk to Wayne about that and find out what the status of that is. In any case, um the P D talked to the state about the crosswalk.
Yep.
And options to resolve the crosswalk. Because one of the things that was discussed is we have signs here that say crosswalk ahead, lighting the crosswalks up. And what the state said, because it's typical in dealing with the state, well, you can do that if the problem is, that it's not an A D A crosswalk, combined crosswalk on the part of the center. So we were talking about it, Chris. And Bill Blaze went through and did a little quick research.
I've already done this.
Okay, well, see, we didn't know that. And now we're coming together as a team and we'll figure it out.
One of the things that, let me hang on for a second. One of the things that is included in this plan B.
Yeah.
Is to put in a traffic signal, a crosswalk.
Yeah.
That um and the crosswalk be moved. So it is not going to be just a plain crosswalk, it'll be a crosswalk. Typically, it is, you're probably aware of this, the town's responsibility to put a crosswalk on, but we are taking on that responsibility.
Well, that was a, some, some good point.
Yep.
And the reason we're moving on this now and presenting it to the board was, you got seventy, eight hundred dollars, I think, that would be. that would be great in purpose, and you sign a contract to get it done, and then you're taking care of that, not losing that money. It's just nice how that all kind of fit together. But, so at least that you could start on this now, it would have to go through the election, have to be approved on, so you cannot do anything in the interim until then.
We cannot do anything until summer.
Yeah, so now we're talking November, December, January, February, March, we're talking six months.
Right.
This can probably be done once we get through the state, within a month to six weeks.
And if this project goes through, we're going to have to move that.
Well, the easy thing to do is, the way this is set up, it'll be on a post, pull the post and move it.
And then we would have to move. When I talked to DOT, putting something in, in the short term was cost, it was cost prohibitive, only because where the crosswalk is now, you'd have to, to put this in, they recommend restarting and putting all this other stuff in. And it already crosses a lane of, two lanes of traffic, and a couple of different times you're crossing people and cars. So they said it would be better if this passes, just to do it then. However, I mean, if, and the costs are significantly different from what I got from the DOT to put these in. So the DOT had told me that it was probably going to be like $35,000.
I don't know, did they price those today or yesterday? And, and the thing that this will do, so what it will require is the crosswalk.
I'm just gonna, um, can we just summarize this up, because I do wanna.
Yeah, I can, just give me about a minute and a half. The crosswalk can stay where it is. All right, the sign on the other side has to be moved slightly to the east, just so the double sided sign would show, because it's only got one side I don't want. It would require placing the AD handicap pedal surface on this side, and also putting a light stand on this side. And it would be towards the firehouse first bay. That way it'd get school buses and the fire department to play a good return. The whole point of jumping on this is it solves the problem before next June, July, August. And I for one, with my background, you've gotta mitigate the threat. We've gotta preprove the risk, we have to preprove the chain breaking and letting this happen. And if we can do this for the $7,000 and get it done, the only thing that's not in there in labor in town, I mean, we could talk to Brian and see what it would cost him, because it's gonna cost drilling a hole and putting the handicap mat in on this side of the street. I, I, that's all the points I just wanted to make, and.
Thanks, Hovey.
If there's a little more research, it has to be done with the DOT. But it's, you can, I just want to make sure, you can uncover the funds, correct? So if you have a contract, funds will be uncovered for expenditure if something had to slide and it couldn't be done.
I mean, so the school board can spend the budget however they see fit.
Yeah.
So anyway, okay, that's, that's, that's not an issue, I need to get it done, just check and make sure.
Thank you.
So are you looking to do this?
Well, so.
No, looking for the SAU with that $7,000 to expend this and get it done. The, the town is looking at it because we've got a problem here with the three and a half. Your work is great on solving the problem in the long term, but Scott, the point, you need a, you need a timely and immediate solution.
I appreciate your, your points. I think I would say the sun has not changed its arc over the last three years. It has been, this, this has been a problem for the last three years, and it has been a lot of problems since the last six months. I appreciate all the work that Lieutenant Blaze and others have done on this. I'm gonna take this into consideration, I think we can have the committee that's already well established at this point, take a look at this. But I don't feel compelled to do any, make any decision about spending the money tonight.
Oh, I'm not, no, I'm not even answering that, Bobby, I totally, I understand how this all works. But this solves the problem, or mitigates it to a degree, or the threat intrudes.
Yeah.
By some change of the form of data numbers.
I'm also, I think, I'm glad you're here, so that you can hear all the conversation updates that the committee has made. And I think, just to be clear, when we established this committee, we had invited, I was pretty broad with my promotion to folks in town. I had wanted, and we wanted, and we have, a pretty wide and varied committee. But all of the folks that you and mentioned were absolutely invited to attend, or to be a part of the committee, and that at this point, I think they're pretty open to folks to attend.
Sure.
Why not invite you and some of these other people to our next meeting?
Sure.
I mean, that to me sounds lovely.
It's on the 10th.
10th, oh, so it's next week?
It's next week, yeah.
Would that be helpful, to come and hear?
Now, now it's a whole school.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, I don't see any, we talked about this.
There's no, there's no downside to anybody who would like to attend, to come in and.
It's a public meeting, anyone's welcome to the 10th.
I don't understand the public meeting, but having been on these committees before, I would think there had been an opportunity to say the specific part, because there'd be a butter and the threat they posed, and the police department is responsible for the safety of the front. That would have been an intrinsic question. I don't know, that's a point. I, I'm certainly, it's a schedule.
And should we try and get in touch with Wayne?
Send, send him an email, send him.
I'm speaking on a turn.
I mean, I, yeah. Go for it, that's fine. I have no problem with it, the more people that come in and give their voice, it's fun.
The committee, can I talk for a sec? Because what the committee did was, we sat and we tried to within and play every touch point that, besides the road, like where kids were in danger as they were coming to the school because of cars and buses and bikes and all that stuff.
Well, totally agree.
Right, so, I mean, that was where we started. And, and we had a list of probably 12 different areas, and we limited it down, trying to be responsible of what were the real touch points, and that crosswalk was number one.
Which was what started to kick this whole ball off.
So I think, I think it would be great if you would come, whoever wants to come.
Yeah.
And, and hear sort of where we are, and, and look at what the plan is to say, well, you may be in this stuff. Or, yeah, that's.
Oh, I think that's an excellent, I guess.
So November 10th.
But you understand what I'm trying to.
I get it, but let's, let's go forward.
For everybody's, everybody at home and those here, the next meeting is November 10th at 6:00 PM here at the school.
Yep.
Jane, will you be able to send an email to Wayne and to Jeff?
Sure, sure, how about I do this? Why don't I send you an email if you mind forwarding it to them? Because I don't know if I have their directory too, that would be really helpful. And I think it'll be more impactful in general, like, please come, anybody who is interested. All of these committee members, all these committee meetings, this is, this is the committee members, but, like, tell us what your thoughts are. If we're off track, let's, let's, let's do it.
Well, I would be surprised if you're, you're off track.
I hope not.
You do diligence.
I hope not. But yeah, so let, yeah, on the 10th, next week, 6 o'clock, here.
And I'll give them a verbal tonight, but I'll also give them the email.
Great, I think that would be wonderful.
Again, I, I've got another meeting to go to tonight.
Go for it. We're not gonna be in this meeting, in this room typically, we're in one of the.
Yeah.
First room, second room on the right.
We're just looking for expeditions for that.
Information is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly, thank you again, I know you're, you're, I don't think any of our other committees have a lot of financial. Is there anything as far as the committee discussion, other than the bond?
I don't think so, right?
I don't think so, really. And I, I think I would love to have, as a committee person, more people from the town. But then we, we have absolutely talked to this, so please don't think we haven't. It's just we've been trying to march along, and so, perfect timing.
Yeah. Guys, the, the amount of progress that has been done over the last three months is exponentially more than has been done over the last 20 years, as far as this particular project.
And we can, we're, we can always decide to have a community forum and open it up to bring people in. And so to do, you know, to do that type of strategy, in addition to outreach, we can bring people in as well.
Right. And I mean, we'll, we will be talking about community outreach, and how that's gonna happen. And Suzie has some amazing ideas, as well as some other committee members. So I expect that to be coming between now and March.
I just wanted to remind you, I know you asked for all the bonds.
Thank you, yeah.
That's the thing, I think it's decided until after the vote.
What is, I'm sorry?
The, the, how the plan is.
The term, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all in the wording of the warrant.
The warrant article.
Which I believe, I think, we intend over to say how the school board engages in determining the length of the bond.
There was discussion at the committee level, which I appreciated, folks asking, is there any way to, to morph the language that's in the bond to indicate that the board will not do one thing versus the other? Are you saying that it's not?
So you.
Somebody who was there, maybe somewhere.
Yeah, so I think what you're saying is, so.
I think it was Karen, actually, who suggested it.
How to word the warrant.
Yeah, how to word the warrant article so that it reflects.
Like that the bond will be 10 years.
So for example, you could say that the bond would be at least over X number of years.
Correct.
Right.
Something like that.
So we.
So you're, you're limiting the board's abilities to, you know, they can't choose anything. But they still would have the ultimate decision to, to choose the length of the bond.
I thought that was an appropriate and irrelevant question, I don't know if there was an answer to that.
So the questions can't actually be done.
So, yes, we would have to, we would have to, so what we always do is we always draft our warrant articles, and then legal counsel Gordon Graham comes over and we review it, to make sure that there's nothing that he would suggest. Now, knowing Gordon, like, if you, you limit it, you don't wanna limit it too much, because then if it doesn't work, if that specific thing you're limiting doesn't work, you cannot move forward with the project. So like, you don't wanna limit yourself too much.
Right.
But we would, we would just have to run the wording by him.
Yeah, right, I mean, my comment back was, if, for example, the advisory committee said, hey, we want a 15 year bond, I don't think we want that, but use it as an example. And then the board said, okay, great, thanks, we're gonna do a five year bond. That's realistically not what's gonna happen. I think I can speak for at least our board members, that we really do want to know what information from the public, and especially this committee, on which of these potential bond options we would go with. And what that impact would be for the townspeople. However, if we, if there is a way to kind of lock it in, I don't see a problem with that either.
If there isn't, Molly, I think the question I would have is, is it appropriate at the bond hearing to have that? Because it's a public hearing, right? We, I don't think we did this per se last year. But we could, as a board, make a statement or commit to wanting to.
Actually, no, I don't, I don't think that as a board we did. But I believe that conversations were had, that this is what we were thinking the term would be, but as a board, we did not.
Correct, but I'm, but in the bond hearing, I feel like that's an appropriate time maybe to have that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, you can talk about, just keep in mind, these rates are not final.
Right, right, right.
These rates will not be final until you actually go to bond, which is well after.
I think that's an important thing to point out. I think this is really critical, because if all of a sudden these rates go
Yeah.
a little bit, they change drastically. I would not want to be locked into one or the other.
And you will not know what your rate is until, now, when we get on schedule. They typically provide a conservative rate, because they don't think, they're not gonna give out a rate that's too aggressive and overpromising them to deliver. But, I mean, if, if people knew what the interest rates were, and you went to bond with the future market.
That was one of the questions that the committee had, this is all coming back to me, that in, if, you know, the vote is in March, right, and we wanna start the project in fiscal year 27, when do you typically go get the bond? Like, is it July?
So the bond sales only happen twice a year, and I.
As I listened to the video, I, I heard Molly's head, it happens twice? I feel like you said it so many times, but it stuck.
We tried to summon your knowledge, but it didn't.
Yeah, they happen in the summer and in the winter. I'd have to go, I mean, Stratton just recently did it this summer, and I feel like they got the deposit in like mid-August, but.
And, and if I may, I think this, this will help, and I know you have to get, you have to get going.
Yeah.
But the, I think what the board is trying to articulate is that they wanna eliminate some of the questions that voters are going to have about the tax impact when they're, when they're voting in March. And I know that, you know, we're not, that you don't set the term, the board doesn't decide the term of the bond until after the vote. But I hear what you're saying about how do you kind of have the language be such that it is providing as much clarity as possible, while also giving that flexibility for the board.
Right.
So that, I think, is what you're driving at, right?
Right. What's the impact?
I think my preference would be, sorry.
No, because.
My preference would be, while we wait to find out the actual answer, probably not locking ourselves too much in the language of the, of the bond warrant. But at the discussion that we have, the bond hearing, be articulate about our intentions.
Yeah, so.
For the public.
So what we would need to do, like, I guess to get the answer to your question, I would need to understand exactly what wording we want on the warrant.
Okay.
Because what I typically do is send drafts of the warrant to legal counsel, and then I can send it to Gordon, and see if he has any.
Can you send me, would you mind if I?
No, I think that would be appropriate, because.
Why don't you, can you send me what the draft warrant article language would be? And then I can work on some tweaks to it potentially? And maybe you and I can get together or kind of chat over email on what those would be.
Or maybe bring it, can, is it appropriate to bring it to the committee?
Yeah, sure.
Right, for the, right, for further input, and then the board makes the final vote, but yeah, sure.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, can do that, we can make sure they do that. And I'll always end up checking with you, Molly, to make sure that it's actually something we can do. We don't wanna, it's something that we can't do on there.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can, or I can grab the one from last year too.
Yeah, it would be the exact same one.
I'll grab it from last year, I can just grab that language. Or unless you have it in a malleable document right now.
No, I'd have to go back to the files from.
Don't worry about it, I'll grab.
I remember copying and pasting it into an email or something.
All right, team, I just, I wanna keep an eye, so we did do the, the school safety committee first. We have a few other committee meeting, agenda items. Any input, Suzie, that you wanted to provide, or Ellen, as other committee members?
We'll let Molly have it, thank you, Molly, for all the.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna kind of do it now.
Thank you.
Hi, I do think that, that the committee is very broad, and the different perspectives that are brought have been outstanding. I do not like doing committee work, and it's actually a committee that I just really appreciate. I think that it's been really thoughtful, the different voices, and again, the different perspectives, whether it's parent perspective, community perspective, faculty members, SAU, it's been outstanding.
Okay.
And I think, thank you for this opportunity to add some additional input. Because I, at the committee, the previous committee meeting, I did mention that paving piece, that if we, if the, if the project were to not pass, and we don't have paving in the local budget, then we wouldn't be able to pave. The other side to that coin that the board needs to consider is that adding the, you know, there's always a, there's always a, for every action, there's a reaction, right? So adding the paving, potentially, we don't, we're not sure of the cost, we're waiting on that. Adding the paving costs, let's just say $130,000 for the sake of this conversation today, to the local budget is going to increase the local budget, right? So you're, it is a little bit, it, it is, you're taking a risk either way. And I think that we wanna consider the optics as to the bottom line. So after, after giving this more consideration, at this point in time, my recommendation would be to keep it in the bond, keep the paving in the bond, and work on our communication and outreach about the project, and make sure we're hitting all the stakeholders, so that we're not adding too much to the bottom line of the local budget. Because the worst case scenario is that the local budget doesn't pass. And then that's, like, that's just, again, that's worst case scenario. So we don't wanna, we don't wanna jeopardize the local budget not passing if the bottom line of the local budget is too high. And to try to keep, like, the committee did advise around trying to keep the, the overall bond to around $500,000. And right now, this $500,000 price point that we have doesn't include the paving.
Does include.
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that in addition to just optics, I think the idea of whatever the length of the bond is, having the cost of the paving be spread out over X number of years versus one year for one budget, might also be a prudent decision. Sorry.
And I don't, and I don't know that, you know, I don't think the board needs to make a decision tonight. But I think it's, it's for, it's for the board to consider
Yes.
as we head into our December meeting, to take another look at the budget.
Yeah.
And how that's impacted.
Right.
And I, I wanna be mindful of Suzie's time.
No, I guess, I'm probably gonna throw a really complicated thing over, I don't even answer, but is, is the potential for a third option to be, put that on its own warrant article? So that the paving would be completely, so that, or does that complicate the whole situation?
I think that overcomplicates it.
Yeah, that's a really interesting way to think about it, but if all of a sudden, the, the current plan passes and the paving doesn't, we're in a bit of a smush.
Right, I mean, that's a, that's an interesting.
Requires the paving.
Yeah, it. Yeah, it kind of.
Yeah.
Re- one equals the other, um, but, you know, in one direction, but not in the other, so.
I think having that in, the information of the breakdown of the cost is going to be really important for the meeting that you guys have.
Yeah, we'll have the, I'll see what we can do to get, um, that piece of it.
Perfect.
Pulled out.
Well, my, my hope is, my, a little less than a year ago, I went to the town meeting where there was, talked about that there wasn't transparency in involvement or inclusion, and I just want to say that anybody who, who's out there that thinks they can say that this year, that conversation shouldn't even make it to public, because at this point, we've talked about it so many times that I don't think you can live in this town without knowing that we're talking about it.
I hope so, but.
And so hopefully, any of the naysayers that are out there will come and say, now, because we've addressed safety as a goal, and every day that goes by from now on, doesn't matter what it costs, if it gets, uh, on the way to school, or a police officer or anybody.
And that we're already, you know, I think the committee has, has discussed some potential ideas for how to continue to open a dialogue, and we discussed that there's no time like the present to, to have conver- community conversations while we're all out and about and, you know, communicating with others, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna strike my board, my board chair now for a sec. Can I just, um, Suzie, you're more than welcome to say, but I know it's late, so, um, if you want to exit safe left or right, you are more than welcome.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, do you have any specific questions for Suzie? I just recognize. Okay. Um.
You also?
Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
I think we've got some more. We're not going to non-public yet, right?
No.
No, no, there's more, if you want to say, there's more meeting, um, before non-public, I just, um, but it's mostly committee updates. Which you can. All the policy committees.
I'm missing the policy discussion.
Yeah, I'm ready for that. Good night, thank you, Suzie. Um, so let's do safety and security, superintendent evaluation, and strategic.
Safety and security has not met.
Okay.
Planning committee has not met.
Okay, beautiful. Um, superintendent evaluation committee.
Yeah, the superintendent evaluation committee met this past week, they updated the vision statement question, and they've done some other new work. The next meeting is in January, um, but overall, it's like good progress, um, on all fronts for them.
Awesome. So the, the vision statement is updated?
Yep, so they've updated the vision statement question, which.
Question, got it.
Um, and we've gone through, uh, we'll get more community engagement, and making sure that work really prioritizes community engagement. Um, and the next meeting is January, twenty, January, um.
January.
Twenty, yes, okay.
January, published.
All righty. Um, the policy update is relatively blah, in that there wasn't that much that changed. Um, I, like I have in the past, I'm going to, um, make a motion to accept AC, ACA, ADC, GBAM, and IMDA as presented. Um, we can obviously discuss it, um, but do I have a second?
Uh, yes, and then discussion.
And then discussion, perfect.
Please.
Um, so, a little summary, AC, um, there were some legislative changes that required some tweaks to language. The one thing that, uh, did, um, you might have seen in the summary, that didn't apply to Newfield, and I raised this, was about the food program.
Yep.
Changes, and so they did check with folks, and they, so it shouldn't be in ours.
It's.
Um, beautiful. Um, any questions about that particular one? AC? Hi, Brian, okay. ACA, there were no changes actually that were made, that was just something that, let me pull it up. We are just reviewing. Where is the thing? Um, okay, yeah, so that's, um, gonna be, we're now getting into a regular cycle of reviewing policies in groups at a regular cadence. So there's gonna be a few of these, including the Pledge of Allegiance, one that we just reviewed a couple of months ago. Um, and there really aren't any changes, but now it's gonna be in a regular cycle. So that's ACA. Um, ADC, the addition and changes was that there's some clarification around some definitions, uh, specifically what a school vehicle was. Um, and we just sort of reformatted some of the, the bullets to make sure that it made sense, because it was, it was a little bit clunky. Um, but that, that one, I think, had some changes that you may have questions on.
I do.
Yeah, perfect. So this ADC.
Yeah, ADC, so where it says school vehicle, as we have, first student is a contracted vendor. Um, how would that be, I would assume that the tobacco's product ban would want to be on our school buses as well.
Um, school vehicle.
Because it, we haven't purchased, we haven't leased, or haven't rented this, they've contracted it. I don't know if that's a vernacular or change. So where does first student come into this?
Where does first student come into this? Um. Is bus listed anywhere on here?
No. I checked.
Do we, do we stick to school vehicle, just in case there are any of those private transportation vehicles?
Correct. Yeah, because before that, there, the, the word, where is it? So we didn't actually change. I'm trying to find the, the reference to where school vehicle is in the policy.
Oh, it's right here. So, um, we have it.
On page.
Thank you, D one, yeah. So that was part of the already existing language, and the question was like, what does school vehicle?
Mean.
Actually mean?
But in school vehicle, our school buses aren't seemingly included in that, seemingly. I might be wrong, but seemingly.
I mean, D one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I feel like, I mean, we had, actually, this is the one part of this committee that we had a pretty long, um, conversation about, and I feel like the answer was that, um, buses have their own particular policy that call out all sorts of, um, regulations and requirements. I could be wrong, but I, I believe that was what the conclusion was.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
It is separate, and then also D one does fit to, you know, visitor contractor vendor, and so the buses would be covered under both vendor and contractor, or contractor.
Right, but it also says. It, it precludes that, that says school vehicle and school grounds.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm getting it back now. Um, on the, the vendor on school grounds, so that would be a school bus on school grounds. What we were trying to make sure we allowed, and it was actually a really interesting conversation, the public health person and me was like, ah, but also understanding individual liberties, you know, what about the parent who wants to smoke in their own personal car? That was the conversation we had. And we were like, we need to be able to not disallow that if they want to smoke in their own car. Um, if they're going through, and that was the, the meat of that particular conversation, which is what then prompted us to define what's school vehicle.
Right, but we play devil's advocate.
Mm-hmm.
If a parent is on a bus on a route and smokes, they're not on school grounds, but they're in a school vehicle, which is not defined as a bus, potentially.
So, I, then what is your proposed recommendation?
And it's covered, it's covered via our contracts with.
With first student.
So I think maybe putting in a reference to that other, um.
The policy.
Policy, um, in some way, shape, or form, to make sure that school vehicle is in, is in some way encompassed in another policy. Because if I read this, like, oh, I can smoke in the bus, but I'd have.
As who? As a pa- as a student?
Okay, no, it's like a parent, or anybody. If I'm on a school bus, but not on school grounds, potentially, you know, I, no visitor contractor or vendor or other member of the public shall use any tobacco product, blah, 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 in any school vehicle or anywhere on school grounds maintained by the district.
So would, let, let me ask this question, would, would your concern be satisfied if we included the word, um, or bu- bus? Like, just saying the word or bus.
Right, vehicle or bus, right, are we not in effect renting school buses when, while we're contracting with vendors? There's not.
I mean, but that's kind of, that's my question, right? That's, does this need to be explicit? Or is it okay as is? That's, that's the question I have. I know, I know it's kind of nitty gritty, but that's the, the kind of like, does this need to be a little bit more clear to make sure that people realize?
What I'm sharing with you is that the conversation went into this element, and the conclusion was no, that this would suffice. And every other district in SAU, um, uses school buses, so I would assume that, um, that that is still not a problem. But I guess, you know, we have been different in the past, so we certainly can either.
Tried to not be.
Right.
Um, we, and we tried to defer to the work of the policy committee.
You know what I may do, if, if you're okay with the change, is if you're okay with, um, either not, not editing this, but either adopting it as is, or holding off on adopting it, and then I can ask the question at the next committee meeting.
We hold off on it, would you mind? Just on this one, because I do have one other question on it.
Yeah.
Which is on section B, um, where we say, it's on the second page. Additionally, no person including without limitations, that. Um, it says, you may have answered this already, may sell, give, or furnish tobacco, e-cigarettes to anyone under twenty-one upon any school facilities. Hey, did you have a conversation about, like, putting that facilities and grounds? Because we do have grounds as a definition. I don't know if you had that conversation at all.
On which card?
So where it says.
The red paragraph.
The red paragraph on the second page, first one. Additionally, no person including without limitations, students or employees may sell, give, or furnish tobacco products, e-cigarettes, et cetera, to any person under twenty-one in or upon any school facility. And I'd say, I would ask if we had considered or had a conversation about adding grounds on it, not just facility or grounds. So this would be all school property versus just the building itself.
I'm, I'm actually, um, searching up the RSA, because I have a feeling that this was added because of the change of the RSA, so that's what I'm.
And we do cover grounds in some of the other sections.
Yeah, we do, we do.
Oh, okay, interesting.
So.
So we can't have grounds.
Yeah, I think.
Via the RSA.
But I think for your previous, um, uh, observation, if you can do me a favor and just email, um, uh, Ellen, your specific question that you'd like me to bring to the policy committee, Ellen, you can forward it to me, and I'll bring it to the policy committee.
Yeah.
Um, Brian?
My only question is, should we say nicotine instead of tobacco? Are kids doing tobacco now, or are they doing nicotine?
Um, I think there is e- liquid, e-cigarettes.
It says liquid nicotine.
It says liquid.
E- liquid, e-cigarette.
That was the other change that had happened.
They're all in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like.
I don't know what they're all, what they're all doing, but I know that it's, there are different versions that you say specifically not a tobacco product.
Right, yeah, e-liquid means liquid, oil, wax containing. Uh, yeah, so we'll have to probably continue to be nimble.
So it does kind of cover that. And the definition. Yeah, that's pretty, that was pretty good.
Yeah, again, I think it had to do with the legislative changes, but, okay, thank you, we'll hold off on that one. GBAM, there was, the only change was a slight regulatory change from Title Nine, um, but otherwise, everything was the same.
Mm-hmm. I'm good with that, yeah.
And then IMDA, Pledge of Allegiance, literally, there was no change, and we reviewed it in March.
I know, I was like, we just did this.
Yeah, so, um, that will now be on a cycle every November, so we'll see it again in November. Um, okay, so, um, I'm going to, um, what's the word? Take back my.
Rescind.
Rescind my motion, I'll make a motion to accept AC, ACA, GBAM, and IMDA as presented.
Also, good.
Okay, all in favor? I think, okay, so then we're gonna revisit ADC for next month, and you guys will, you know, all right, thank you. Um, any other things on our agenda? Our next meeting is, we said December.
Fourth.
Fourth, and we now have this public hearing on the.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Um, any other suggested agenda items? I know it's been a long meeting, but thank you for sticking with it.
I haven't thought of any. I'll think of something for next time.
For next, for next month?
For next time, or even now, if you have any open.
I would just love to know if there's a, a plan in place to fix the paint and the fascia around the front of the building. That, the building up here is just so noticeably falling apart, that I just was wondering if there's, if that could be brought up at some point. That doesn't even need to come to the board, I just, watching all the paint peel off and watching the just building fall apart. Um, came apart when I went to my, visit my old elementary school, and I saw that building falling apart, too, I thought, we really need to take care of this.
Sure.
The gutters and everything looked like pretty horrific.
When was the last time we got them, got that painted? I feel like it was.
Fifty-four.
Not that long ago. I think it was when Echo was here a little.
The last time that we painted?
The exterior of the building.
I think it was like.
Questions.
Again, perfect opportunity for the, uh, capital improvement.
Which I do think is warranted.
I'm really, um, thinking that that is gonna be a robust, hopefully a robust conversation that we can act decisively on.
Yeah.
Um, the only question I have, though, about that is, if we decide at the December board meeting to do that, will we have enough time to do the process, uh, that Molly is needing? Um, like, do we have to get quotes? Do we have to?
If it's under ten thousand dollars.
That might be a question for, who's the facility manager now?
Uh, Brian Samson.
I was almost gonna say Rusty, like, it's not it.
Maybe we can get some preliminary action with Brian, saying, hey, the board is thinking about spending some dollars on this in the near future. Can we get some pre-work so that when December fourth comes?
Sure.
We can, we're ready to act.
Sure.
Um, I think that would be awesome.
Pre-work meaning a better idea of price, or can you be more specific?
Pre-work as in, not, not just a better idea on price, but like, is, does he have any, are there any, like, titans in this field that do this?
What vendors, what, the comprehensive items that would be included and such, and price points?
Yeah.
Is that kind of?
I think so, and then I want to know.
I have an idea of vendors, but we'll get, I'll drill it all down for the next meeting.
And I want to know if it's, unless it's unreasonable, come December fourth, say we have the hearing, the public
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is generally agreeable to this, um, decision, then we as a board decide to, to do that. I want to be able to act expeditiously, like, do we have to do an RFP right then, or are you saying if it's?
We'll check the policy, but I believe if it's under ten thousand dollars, you go, need to do that.
Yeah, so maybe we can get a request, can we do a request?
You can do.
What can we do?
You, so what we've done for the committee is, you can informally ask. Like, you can't, you can't put a request for, you can't put a request for quote out. You can go to different vendors and say, hey, you know, this is what we're thinking about ballpark.
We have dollar amounts already, so I'll.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, there you go.
We have some dollar amounts from previous ones that have been.
All right, then, then if, then if they're all under ten thousand, then we don't need to do this, um, request for.
And we don't need to do the RFP.
RFP, and then we can move, okay.
But I'll triple check that, and I'll let you know in advance on December fourth.
Thank you, thank you. All righty, anything else for the board?
I don't think so.
This is a very.
Just the non-public.
Oh, yes, that thing. All right, um, at, uh, six oh eight, I would like to call, um, under chapter ninety-one A, section A, uh, a non-public. Do I have a second?
We, you have a second, and then there has to be a roll call vote.
Yes, all right.
Second.
So Brian's second, a roll call vote, I, Bobby, Kelly.
Hi, Jane Walsh.
Hi, Brian Belanger.
Okay, that was at nine, uh, six oh eight, nine oh eight, six oh eight. All righty, it is now six twenty, and I am going to make a motion to get out of, um, non-public. Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
All righty, all in favor?
Do a roll call out as well?
All in favor, Bobby, Kelly, I.
Jane Walsh, I.
Right, Belanger, I.
Beautiful, okay, so, um, and last, on the agenda, I am going to make a motion to accept the paraprofessional collective bargaining agreement.
I will second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
I, 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 okay, it is unanimous. Um, I would like to end the meeting at six twenty. Any objections? Do I have a second? Do I need a second? All right, all in favor? All right, thank you, everybody.